Can we do roll call?
Commissioner Brothers.
President.
Commissioner Krasinski.
Here.
Commissioner Kopso.
Here.
Chair Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Tark will be absent this evening. He was stuck in another part of the country, but said that as he was able to would join as a member of the public and would give public comments if he can.
That would mean, just for clarification, that, for instance, if we were in discussion, I could not ask for anything from there?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, first thing on the agenda is the usual. Do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda? Please come up here.
Testing one. Okay. Well, first of all, I'm glad to see the Planning Commission band back together. It's a nice sight. So, I'm Karen Askey, and I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. And I wanted to share a discussion that the Parks and Rec Committee has been having, and we've had it at the last two meetings. And I'm sure, as some of you know, Portola Valley is currently facing constraints on recreational facilities, which will continue to intensify as our population increases. Today's issues include things like conflicts with the tennis and pickleball courts, the absence of bathroom facilities at Dorothy Ford Field, a lack of appropriate space for a fenced-in dog park, a need for a safer toddler's playground, and the impingement on parking spaces at Rosati Soccer Field and Ford Field now. And in the recent Housing Element ISMND, Parks and Rec strongly disagreed that there would be a less-than-significant impact on our town's recreational facilities. And while acknowledging that the town has a great amount of open space and hiking trails, the ISMND did not directly address recreational facilities and parking. Open space and trails do not necessarily cater to all ages. A trail is not a toddler's playground. A trail is not a pickleball or bocce court that could serve more seniors. We in Parks and Rec are working hard to identify and research potential solutions. Things like, could we partner with Priory for use of its tennis courts, or should we build a new court? Could Christ Church put in a toddler's playground that could serve our entire town? Could Stanford offer us land for a dog park? Every idea should be thought of and reviewed. But here's our ask of the Planning Commission and Town Council. As we move forward with our Housing Element, Parks and Rec would like to see the Town Council and Planning Commission to consider and ideally enact a new ordinance that would require larger development projects, such as over 10 units or two-acre parcels, to set aside a portion of land for recreational space or facilities that could serve our entire community. Clearly, this idea needs to be researched and analyzed by experts with respect to building and zoning codes and warrants a study session, which is something I'd like you to consider. We envision that this new ordinance would be included in both rezoning and building codes and should be enforced in the planning and development phases of the project. And the town should specifically ask for land dedication and not an in-lu fee. There is a scarcity of land that we can do things on, and money may not alleviate that situation. We feel we should also require some sort of maintenance fee to cover the estimated costs of maintenance, repair, and replacement under a suitable timeframe, say 20 years. We also believe this idea should be addressed in the post-Housing Element adoption plan that is currently being presented by Commissioners Haskell and Taylor. Parks and Rec is mentioned under Top Three, which goes over SEQA guidelines and local guidelines. And we will share this thought at the next council meeting as well. I'm late to the game, but I'll send you guys all a copy of these written comments of what I've said today. And I'd also encourage you to review the agenda attachments from our last Parks and Rec meeting, which was on August 15th. Thanks.
We have someone in the back. Please come up.
Actually, put my glasses on.
Hi. I am concerned about the Hawthorns. One of the options is to put the parking along Alpine Road, 20 to the left of the driveway, 20 to the right, possibly removing trees for safety reasons. I want you all to be aware of that. And there are other possibilities. I've heard that it's not going to happen on Los Trancos Road. But you can go up the driveway, turn left, go down to where we've been parking for the tours. I've gone on a two-hour tour and now a four-hour tour. But I am concerned that it's along the scenic corridor and what might be planned there and how we can protect the scenic corridor. Is that the only option? And I asked the group that's planning if they could come up with three parking options rather than just one. So I think our community should be aware of that. I also am concerned that Karen Vatra and Helen are our only voting members from this community. And how will they get the information if we don't allow them to gather with the public? So I would like to see Karen Vatra have access to at least five members of, maybe from different committees, possibly volunteers from our town. There's some of us that really care about this. And she doesn't really want to act alone. She wants to act on a committee. But it's not planned till after they meet with another committee with mid-pen, and then we get the five people together. But I'm proposing do it now and give Karen Vatra and Helen the support they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Let me look online here, see if we got anybody else. Get yourself behind me. Okay. I see six attendees from the public, but nobody has their hand up. So, we're gonna call up.
Oh. I wanted to make a comment.
You want to?
I wanted to make a comment.
Oh. All right.
Is that okay?
Not normal, but okay.
Yeah. So, in our last meeting, which was now, I think, about four months ago, Caroline Vertonghen had a comment about the draft minutes that we reviewed. And she said that she had actually said Portola Valley Building Department when the minutes recorded A-Bag. And I went back and listened to the recording, and she was correct. So I wanted to acknowledge that, that we had actually said the Portola Valley Building Department. What we eventually recorded in the minutes is not correct. And in general, I mean, I think that we have tried to avoid making small changes to the minutes about members of public's public comments. But I mean, it may be hard to say what rises to the level of significance, and something may not interest the discussion in that meeting, but a future meeting or influence our thinking. So I think what could work well is to have the public email us ahead of time. And I personally would not mind listening to the recording ahead of time so that then I could enter the correction as part of my action during the meeting.
So, let's have offline discussion. I think we're moving into, we didn't agendaize that. And it's something that the public might want to have comments on, and we haven't done that part of it. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, this isn't agendaized. It's just a comment that I'm putting out there for the future. But then I do have a second part to my comment. So Caroline actually said that she emailed us about that ahead of that meeting. And so I followed up on this, and I tried sending a test email to her email address, the PlanningCommission@portolavalle.net. And that email did go through to staff, but it seemed like the message that they received didn't indicate that I was actually sending it to the Planning Commission alias. I saw that it seemed like it was sent to Town Center at portolavalle.net, maybe through some forwarding. And so I went back and forth with staff on this. But I guess it remains unresolved, basically, how the emails to PlanningCommission@portolavalle.net are actually routed to us. And I did notice that in today's agenda packet, on the front of it, it says to send comments to Ace Smith@portolavalle.net. It means email address. However, our website still does say PlanningCommission@portolavalle.net. And so, yeah, I think the bottom line is we do need to resolve this somehow so that the public can reliably email us. And unless staff has some comments today, I think maybe it is something that we can agendaize for a future meeting.
Let's see. Yeah.
Can I just speak to that briefly?
If you'd like to.
So, the email address that's on the website is a generic email address for the Planning Commission. Historically, it was forwarded by the town clerk to me for distribution to the Planning Commission. So those are generally things that are just like a general correspondence to the Planning Commission. And there used to be, honestly, none. Like, one email every four or five months was like the frequency. So it was very easy to manage. As we've been working on these items that require a lot more public comment and attention, we've been using specific email addresses, not the Planning Commission's generic email address, on purpose so that we can corral those hundreds and hundreds of emails so that they go to different places. So what we've actually been doing is on the agenda, if people have comments on that agenda, then we're trying to direct them to a specific either person or one of our generic email addresses. It's like for all the Housing Element stuff, all of that goes to housing@portolavalle.net. And we try to direct people there. And so we've had a lot of transition in our town clerk's office. And so I agree that we need to, you know, make confirmation with our current staff about how those emails are being routed. But I looked at that email chain, and the person that you were corresponding with was the cover for the cover for the town clerk. So it kind of makes sense that she wasn't sure how to help you. So, you know, we do have a town clerk that's appointed now permanent, and so there is an opportunity to confirm where those email addresses, where those emails should go now that there's a higher frequency. The other thing the Planning Commission may wish to address in the future is emails that are not on any specific topic. So in the past, what staff has done is grouped all those emails together and held them and waited until that agenda item came up and then give you all the emails at once. So that has been the preferred practice. If the Planning Commission wants to receive emails in a different way, then that's something that, you know, you should take up and we should talk about in the future. I hope that helps.
Yeah, definitely. And maybe it's just a matter of making that clear to the public on the website.
Welcome.
Managing to keep our town staff. Oh, so, let's move on to the first item on the agenda. Implementation of SB 330. And do we have a presentation, a report?
We do have a presentation. Brief, but I think the graphics are helpful. So I'm gonna do the best I can with this. But Catherine is also here. She's our interim town attorney. She's awesome. If you haven't had a chance to interact with her yet.
Oh, and just so everybody knows, so this came up, and we were invited to a committee of committee meetings like we normally do. But we had a couple of meetings that I thought I'd like to get the input of the rest of the commission since we can fit it in. We will take public comment, of course. And just so the public knows, there are multiple other commissions involved. I don't think they're gonna have a chance to meet four. So if you want to get your public comment in, you can do it here, and we'll pass it along.
Okay. So we are talking about SB 330. That's a state bill that went into effect a couple of years ago. So you all know that the town is in the process of implementing a number of different housing-related laws. Times are changing. We're catching up on some things, and some laws are becoming relevant that weren't as relevant before for us. So SB 330 is also known as the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. It does a number of things. But the topic that we wanted to talk to you about tonight is the limit on the number of public meetings that can be held specifically on housing projects. So this is important. This is specifically related to housing. So it doesn't impact like our conditional use permit process for commercial projects, as an example. So we wanted to address this requirement in advance of it actually coming up for any projects, especially in light of the town ethos around public participation. So as the chair mentioned, we are planning to convene this committee of committees format that we've used for some other topics, specifically with the relevant town committees and commissions that are mentioned within our municipal code as having some responsibility related to development review. And then, as the chair just mentioned, he will attend this committee of committee meetings, a meeting and pass along the comments of the full commission as well as those that are received from the public tonight. So this is trying to break down the basic framework of what a lot of us call the five-meeting rule in planning jargon, term of art. And so the way that the law works in common language is you can't have more than five hearings that are required by the city or town for a housing development project. So then, of course, the question is, what is a hearing? Okay, so it's any kind of public meeting. And then, and it includes any kind of advisory body, so any of our committees, any of our decision-making bodies, so that's ASCC, Planning Commission and Council, or subcommittees of any of those groups. So it really is any official, organized subcommittee or committee of the town. It does include what we refer to here as either study sessions or preliminary meetings, when we use that language. Those do count. It also does include appeal hearings. So if there was a decision made by the Planning Commission, you have to save one meeting in case that decision is appealed up to the council. Okay? It does not include developer-sponsored meetings. So oftentimes, an applicant will have a neighborhood meeting, for example. Okay, so that doesn't count. Obviously, it gets a little gray area if you make them hold a meeting, and it sort of becomes a town meeting, so we have to be careful. It would have to truly be developer-sponsored meetings, not required by the town, and that don't turn into a town meeting. It also does not include legislative hearings. So as a reminder, there are certain actions that the Planning Commission and the council here that include a change to policy. And so that's gonna include things like a general plan amendment or a zoning code amendment. This doesn't happen very often here. It happens in other cities much more often, where a development application includes a general plan amendment or a zoning code amendment in order for that to go forward. But we wanted to point that out because in many areas of the law, legislative hearings are handled differently. Then, this is information about the towns' process. So what we've included for you here is what the bodies are that review a housing project that includes a subdivision. Okay, so this could be a physical subdivision of land. It could be, you know, division of air. It could be division of, you know, different space that we might see in different types of housing projects. And the towns' process is, everyone knows, it's quite lengthy. It may include multiple meetings with these different bodies. And this is the list of the committees and commissions that would review a housing project with the subdivision under our code. So the Trails and Paths Committee, the Bicycle-Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee, Conservation, ASCC, something called the Subdivision Committee that I'll go over separately, then the Planning Commission, and potentially the Town Council, depending on the type of project that it is and what types of entitlements are necessary. Though you may have never heard about the subdivision committee because it has been rarely convened in what I would call the modern era, which is, I don't know, since I graduated from college, it's like the modern era. So this is unique to Portola Valley. This is something I have never heard of before in any other place. So it's a specific section that includes a whole nother committee. Okay? And this committee includes by code, the Town Planner, which is my position, the Planning and Building Director, the Town Engineer, which is Howard's position, Public Works Director, the Town Geologist, which we all know is John Wallace from Cotton Shires. The code says the Building Inspector, which is the old-fashioned language for building official. In this case, it would be our consultant building official. The Fire Chief, of course, that would be represented by the Fire Marshal. The Health Officer, which is an old-timey term that is really just referring to county environmental health, you know, as they review our septic and other things like that. The Town Historian, if there are historic resources. And then a designated member of ASCC Conservation Committee and the Trails Committee. So even though all of these parties already have a review authority over development projects, the code says that these people all have to get together again, even though they've already reviewed the project, review the project again, and then submit those comments in writing to you as the Planning Commission. So this is, I would imagine, represents, at the time, the idea that it was important to get together to share information. I would imagine it was not as easy to access the information as we have it today on the website, you know, over Zoom, et cetera. So that's why I think they did this a long time ago.
I ask you, what constitutes a subdivision with prerogatives?
It's been interpreted as like anything that increases the amount of developable properties. You know, so we occasionally have a lot split. It has not been convened for a lot split. So it hasn't been convened for anything small like that. So we did convene the subdivision committee very early on for the Stanford Housing Project. But I'm not familiar with the subdivision committee being convened prior to that since maybe Blue Oaks? Something like that?
Thank you.
So these are just some questions to get you thinking about, you know, how do we allocate these five meetings? Should any meetings be removed from the process? Right? So we're pointing out the subdivision committee as a suggestion, right? Should that be eliminated? Does that still make sense today? Should some of these meetings be grouped together? And if so, how? Should some bodies have an opportunity for multiple reviews, given what each body is charged to do? So this is kind of the way I'm thinking about it and suggests that you can start to develop your thinking. So these are just some options, some illustrations, examples. Okay? So in Example A, we, so five meetings every time, right? We are reserving the fifth meeting for a Town Council meeting because either they're the final decision-making body or we have to save it for an appeal. Okay, so we really have four meetings to work with. So in Example A would be the Trails Committee, BPTS, and Conservation could have a joint meeting. Right? Imagine a big meeting in the community hall, big table, all get together, chat it out, right? And then ASCC Subdivision Committee, Planning Commission, Town Council. Example B, that same big joint meeting, but then an ASCC meeting, two Planning Commission meetings, and then council. Example C, another thing I thought about is Conservation Committee and ASCC oftentimes have a lot of things in common and benefit from that communication. So maybe joint Trails and BPTS, and then joint Conservation Committee and ASCC. And then an ASCC meeting, Planning Commission, and Town Council. So you can see in these examples, Example B has the two Planning Commission meetings. Example C has two ASCC meetings. And so it kind of depends on, you know, how you view the role of those bodies. As a reminder, we are moving in the direction of more objective standards. And so there's gonna be less discretionary design review as the town moves forward. More things are going to be specified in the code in future projects. And so this will be kind of an evolving landscape. Now, these are not necessarily things that staff is recommending, but I just wanted to give you examples of how you might think about it. And then, this is my big reminder. Okay? State law is very complex. There are so many nuances and exceptions. So we are not outlining every scenario for you. We are giving you the one with the most complexity, which is a subdivision application. Okay, that includes housing. And so we're looking for a general approach from, you know, from the Planning Commission, from the Committee of Committees, so that we could have a general outline of how meetings could be allocated. And then there could be some adjustments, right? And if it's not a subdivision, then we can make an adjustment. But, and there's certain projects that may be subject to different types of review, depending on what state law says, right? So we've become familiar with the supportive housing law. And Willow Commons was approved, you know, as a ministerial project. It went to ASCC for compliance with objective standards and to receive recommendations, right? But certain projects are not gonna go through all of these steps because of the way that all the state laws interact. But we want to be prepared for the one that has the most complexity. So this is how it, this is how it feels, right? And we're over here in the corner, and we're trying to deal with all of this. And then we have our attorneys that help us and guide us through. So just for members of the public to remember that this is imperfect, what we're doing here. And that's just, that's just part of it. So I'd be happy to answer questions from the commission. I'll do my best in layman's terms and kind of practical terms. Catherine can answer more technical questions. And then the objective is for the Planning Commission to give feedback to the chair for him to take forward. So that concludes my presentation.
Question.
I have many questions. Does it, um, what does this apply to? Just any old house, like a 2,000-square-foot house, or just to multifamily?
It technically applies to single-family development as well. Correct. I fought with everyone I could think to fight about, about that rule, because that makes no sense to me. It makes sense if it was, you know, three units or more, for example. Not just like a single-family home and an ADU.
Yeah.
But I don't think we necessarily have to reflect too much on that process through what we're doing here and through the Committee of Committees. I wouldn't recommend that we worry too much about our single-family home process right now and focus instead on larger housing development projects that may come forward eventually. Right? Because if we could get those big projects to squish into five, well, certainly, we could get a single-family house to fit in to a five-meeting process. Yeah, and there's, you know, the most common for a more complex single-family home is two ASCC meetings and one Planning Commission meeting if it has to come, right? Every once in a while, an appeal.
Right.
So we do have to think about, like, Conservation Committee will sometimes agendize them.
Right.
But it's, you know, we want to think about where our focus is, and we can always come back and revisit the single family.
Great.
And when does it go into effect?
It's currently in effect and has been for a couple of years. You're having to live with it now? Yes.
And what about the SEQA reviews? Are they in this five, or then they get to be their own set of 10 meetings?
So I'll do my best in layman's terms, and Catherine can weigh in as well. The SEQA interpretation is a little bit complex. And I don't think any of this has really, there's not really any court cases yet to really understand it. The best practice right now is for us to be conservative and assume that if we had a meeting to receive public comments, like we would on an EIR, for example, and we would have a meeting and let people come give public comments through the Planning Commission, that that would count as one of the meetings. Wow, so in that list, you had one of the, one or if there were two Planning Commission meetings, would have to allow time for the EIR comments, which can be a
would have to allow time for the EIR comments, which can be a lot.
Yeah, so you might, you know, we might create a nuance, you know what I mean? In the procedure, there might be a couple of different versions of the flow chart that, you know, if if people feel like it's very important to have a public meeting to receive EIR comments, then the planning commission would get two in that case. It is not a requirement to have that meeting where we receive public comments. But it's a, it's a well-known practice that's been done in this area for a long time. But I would say people might be questioning that practice now because it uses up one of the five meetings.
And as you all know, when we have planning commissions, I really try to get them to end at 11:00 PM because many people turn into pumpkins. If we were going along and we'd only gotten partway through the materials and we needed to continue the meeting, is that allowed and it, I mean, and you can continue it for, you know, many, many meetings? If the, if you just have so much material you can't go through, can you still count that as one or?
No, if you continue it to a future date, even if you like leave, you know, we continue to a date certain sometimes.
Right, sometimes we do that. And then we don't take, we don't restart with a review of the topic and the public comments. We really just pick up where we left off.
That counts as another meeting towards the five.
We'd have to just say that we got it done.
Yeah.
It were one of these precious meetings that, ooh.
Yes, and to me, there is a very clear intent in the law to make sure that projects are able to move through expeditiously. And I think this is on purpose because there's been a number of communities that had such a long meeting process for housing projects that delay and uncertainty has been a considerable deterrent to housing being constructed.
Good, I think that's all my questions now, thanks.
I want to follow up on Anne's first question. I have a handful of questions. Actually went back and read SB 330. And the very first line says that it applies, the very first sentence, to low, moderate, and income housing. I also then went and looked at the Legislative Council Digest and also says that it applies to low and moderate income housing. So I'm hearing that you're not interpreting it that way. And I'm seeing that there are sections of the code that don't repeat that. But it seems pretty clear that it only applies to those kinds of housing projects. And I guess that's a question for Catherine, whether you might want to go back and look at it more carefully in that context. Remembering that it's not a rule we have to write, it might be a position that we have to defend. But I presume that's how this would be for.
I think I understand your question, but let me just repeat it to make sure I I'm on the same page. Your question is whether this, whether the definition of housing development project is is limited to low and moderate?
Or 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 better, doesn't include an expensive single home or a lot split.
Yeah.
More to that point.
Yeah.
But yeah, by the words that I read here, for very low, low, moderate income households or emergency shelter is the first line of.
Yeah, I would direct you to the footnote in my memo that defines housing development project and gives a code citation. I think, you know, I think a lot of, a lot of folks in this team, it's been now a few years, but this five meeting rule has been, in fact, I think a lot of folks have the same question as Laura mentioned, is how could this possibly also apply to single dwelling units? But it has been interpreted that way. Both in practice and in HCD guidance, so.
Say that again, both in practice?
In HCD guidance, so HCD does also have technical guidance on SB 330. So that's another, another source of of information that we oftentimes look at in terms of interpreting these relatively new state laws that are not always perfectly drafted, to be honest.
Just a comment or a question, so I guess I can't agree with that last statement. I mean, I feel like this is just such overreach in some ways, I understand the purpose, that it seems to be important that we look at all of these nuances. And as Laura's examples show, the way we've put ourselves together as a town, there's, it it may impact us differently.
Well, let's, let's.
So my second question relates to that.
Questions, right. Then we'll do discussion later, right?
No, I I I was going to my next question, which is also, your memo is very helpful. At least I got started on what parts of the code to go read, was what really constitutes a body? I mean, for us, I think there's no question that a meeting of the town council, a meeting of the planning commission, and the ASCC, those three bodies all have significant decision-making authority. And would, were they required to meet, would fall within the definition here? I guess my question goes to the different committees that we use as a town. And I, and I would, I would submit that, as I get to my question, that were we a bigger town and had we a larger staff, we would have an earthquake committee, or we would have an earthquake staff, or you would have a health department, or or some of those things that we don't have and that I feel like our little committees provide. So I looked at the section of your memo, section, you referenced 95905.5, I think that's a typo, I think it's 65905.
Correct, I catch.
Yeah, but it didn't take me too long to figure that out, but it talks about legislative bodies, city planning agency commission, or other designated hearing officer, no comma, or body of the city or county. It seems to be our committees, bike committee, and I don't even know all of them, are bodies of the city. Would you agree or not agree? At best. And then I went and looked at our, our handbook, which basically says a lot of them don't have actual, they're not part of the town, and I can quote that to you. So I got, my question is, take it, reading this strictly, do all of those committees qualify?
I would say that this definition in SB 330 was intentionally drafted quite broadly. And so my reading of it is yes, our committees would qualify under, under this definition. And apologies for the typo, but yeah, if you read the definition of hearing in SB 330, and it's actually beyond hearings. I think a hearings generally is being noticed public hearings. But when you read the definition, it's clearly intended to be much, much more broad. And I think, as Laura mentioned, this is an example of the state really trying to address a perceived problem, I guess I would say, in terms of of wanting these projects to move forward more expeditiously.
Can you feel that way, even if these committees are not making a specific decision as to a specific project?
A lot of them are, are, you know, recommending bodies and they would not be making a decision, but rather would be making a recommendation, and that still would count.
But the recommendation would be to us or the town council where the decision would be made? The question?
The recommendation is generally to the planning commission or the town council, yes.
I mean, I guess you see my frustration. I, 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 I feel like we have a lot of committees that I feel like this has a differential impact on us and trying to figure out how to phrase that. Okay, my final, I think my final question was it does, the, this does, this, this SB 3530 does not specifically address SEQA, right?
It does address SEQA insofar as it's the five hearing rule does not apply to public hearings that are quote required by SEQA. This is a little confusing because SEQA doesn't actually require any hearings. So this is a legislative, you know, challenge. And, and, you know, the, as the memo states, conservatively jurisdictions are counting meetings to accept comments as one of the five.
But I didn't see an actual reference to the California Environmental Quality Act. You're interpreting this to include that, or is there a specific reference?
My believe, my, I believe this is in SB 330, but you're right, our memo doesn't have, and I can get that for you.
Because I, I would really like to know that. Because, uh, because I'd really like to know that and I don't want to make a comment. My final question. My final question is is, is the only way that this would be enforced by, is it by an aggrieved applicant? So it'd only be enforced retrospectively by somebody who thought we'd had more than five. They probably, would they probably not have many other complaints, but that might be one they throw in?
Yeah, so I didn't prepare this for, for the memo, but SB 330 may be enforced generally would be enforced by the applicant, the aggrieved applicant. But it may also be enforced by a housing organization. But there's some nuances there because that's a sort of limited group. And there's some information in that HCD technical guidance that I mentioned that goes into a little bit more about who the eligible plaintiffs are and what the remedies would be if they're successful in court. Namely fines, that's one of the, one of the potential remedies. And then in extreme cases, they could get a court order requiring approval of the project.
I guess my final question, and this is my final question, is having worked through the, attempted to work through the peculiarities of Portola Valley and how we govern ourselves with those questions, would a defense to such a lawsuit be a memo to file or similar action? Building off of the details that were in Laura's, Laura's mail message there, or you think there's no room even for that?
I'm not sure if I, if I, could you, maybe recite that?
Well, I'm trying to take the difficulties of applying. We are a small town with volunteer bodies that provide us with expertise. The Conservation Committee, the Geological Committee, they have, they make my head spin with their knowledge. And perhaps were we a larger town, and I've dealt with larger towns, you've probably dealt with many more larger towns, they have in-house expertise. So I'm trying to balance our ability as a town to use our volunteer expertise in a way that can still advise us without, that in many large towns, would probably done in-house, in staff meetings without running afoul of this. That's the crux of what I'm trying to get to.
Yes, and I, I, I guess, the, I don't think this statute was drafted with kind of Portola Valley in mind, you know? I, I think you're right, that it was drafted, you know, had in mind a larger organization, like as you say, has in-house, you know, geologists, in-house, in-house folks, and doesn't rely on, on town volunteers, as it's typically, as we do here.
But my question was if that's something that we might be able, a word I used to use when we were in private practice, might be something we could paper over in advance to give ourselves some leeway on the five potential meetings. And maybe you don't have to answer that. That is a question, if you feel like answering.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't, you know, based on language of SB 330 is not an exception for small towns or, you know, towns with a lot of committees or, you know, bond spirits that do work that may be done by staff and or larger organizations. So I think that would be one of those policy risks type of analyses that would need to be taken.
Thank you.
And I would just build on that, that the technical reviews that are done in larger cities are primarily done here by our consultant team. So there's still engineering review, there's still geologic review. The Conservation Committee here does go above and beyond any kind of landscaping review that is done, any place I'm familiar with. A very large city may have a landscape architect on staff, but none of the mid-sized cities in San Mateo County have that kind of, you know, staffing on their team. And so those technical disciplines are covered by the technical reviews that are already done as part of the development review process.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that preliminary reviews are included, which seemed kind of surprising to me. What happens if the project changes by a lot between the preliminary review and actual application? What, what even defines it as being the same project? Preliminary happens before there's an application?
Yeah, so the five meetings start to count once the project is deemed complete. Okay, but also we have to keep in mind that the state laws are moving in the direction of objective standards. And so in this ideal, there are not significant changes in the project. That's just something we're coming to terms with, right? As jurisdictions, and let me tell you, as professional planners, it's a little bit of a next essential crisis. What do you need me for if the project's just going to get approved? What do we need all of us for, right? And so it is like a question that we're grappling with. And this law's been around for a couple of years, and it's still hard. Do you know what I mean? To see how it's all going to come together between the objective standards and the five meetings and larger cities that have more projects are getting the hang of it. But I think this is something that we're trying to say, like, what's the starting point for what we're going to do in Portola Valley? And then there may have to be adjustments along the way, and like different ways of thinking about it. And like, that worked, that didn't work, do you know what I mean? We might want to work with our applicants to do, to come before our committees and commissions for preliminary reviews before completeness. We might want to ask them to do more community meetings, right? There might be some nuance and some tools, but to be in compliance with state law, we don't want our process to be an impediment to an eventual approval of a housing project. I mean, that's really what this is about. We don't want to be using a process to scare off development. And I believe that that is a lot of the intent behind this.
And I, I understand that our, we used to have ASCC preliminary review meetings. I understand, like, if we had those again, the same other, those would not count because applicant, the project could not be complete at that point.
For ASCC, we kind of have three levels of review, depending on how complete the project is. And the terminology is kind of hard, but what we use is conceptual review, and that's a very early review. So it's definitely not complete. Oftentimes, the complete plans are not even drawn. And that's an optional step that people can take before they submit complete applications. And then usually a preliminary review is when it's already complete, and then the final review for more complex projects.
Okay, yeah, I guess I was thinking the conception. So on the red page five in the memo, in the footnote, it's defining housing development project. And it, it says that it includes ministerial projects, and I was just a little confused about that. Typically, the ministerial projects wouldn't have public meeting reviews, right?
Yeah, I find it confusing, too.
I, I agree. I think this is legislative trying to be as broad as possible, but I think that in general, practically speaking, that wouldn't trigger the five meeting rule.
In that footnote, it ends with like a dangling comma, and I just didn't know if that was like a typo or if we actually are missing some.
You guys are so good. That was my second typo in the memo. That should have been a period.
Okay, so we're not missing anything. And then, yeah, I was also wondering about, okay, so the law took effect in January 2020, so so I guess we are currently not having more than five meetings for projects. But yet we're coming up with these new implementation guidelines, I guess. Would those guidelines apply to projects that are already, have already been submitted?
It could potentially, depending on the case. So, you know, since we don't, we haven't had larger projects, right? We haven't had to implement this before. Whatever guidance the community comes up with through this process presumably would apply to the Sanford Housing Project. And I don't think we have anything else in right now where it would apply. Somebody asked me, like, would it have changed anything? Somebody asked me, like, would it have changed anything, right? So like the Willow Commons Development, for example, support under the sort of housing law. So that was its own process. And that's the only thing that we've had in recently. That, you know, people have asked me, how does this work with the different projects?
How many meetings has the Stanford project done?
The Stanford project has already had several meetings. Because of when it was submitted, there was additional, like, there was discussion between the town and the applicant about whether SB three thirty applied or not. And so the resolution that we have reached on that issue is to say that that project is going to be subject to five meetings going forward from this point. I do want to caution the commission because we do have a conflict of interest on the Stanford project. So we should not speak about that project in particular, but we're just using it as an example of how this policy may be implemented.
That's all my questions, thanks. So I was actually just hitting down that, so if we were to get a new project, like the Stanford wedge, of the examples that you gave us, those are possible ways it may play out, we'd be limited to two meetings for something like that?
Five total, the planning commission would be limited to presumably one or two.
Right. Okay, that's together then.
Can I ask, in our housing element, which properties would, the one that's on the corner of Nat Horse and Alpine that we discussed about four or nine projects, that would be subject to this, right? And then the opt-in where a homeowner could build, I think we ended up at four units. Oh, no, that, or that, we hadn't decided, that could be a CUP, and then it would be outside this, is that right? Wow, Ann, that's a great question. I think it would not, in the housing element, it would not require a conditional use permit. I think opt-in would be subject to this. But for opt-in, there would be separate meetings that would establish the program where a lot of the criteria would already be set and discussed and known and publicly vetted. And then the projects would just come through a process to comply with it. So if we're doing the program, we can have ten meetings if we want.
Yep, which we might want.
But then when a particular homeowner came and said, okay, I read your program, now I'm ready to go ahead. That, that homeowner would only be subjected to five, presumably.
Yes, and what we wrote in the housing element was, um, you know, a commitment to not have a burdensome application process for, for, for opt-in.
Okay, we could have two meetings, right?
Yeah, two, two of the planning commission, I believe, is what's in there.
Actually, one more question.
Sure.
Like, you, you have the options that you, that you laid out. Let's say we picked one of those, well, I guess the question is, are we trying to, is there room to come up with, like, how much flexibility can we have? Can we say, okay, we have these four, and then we have like one wild card depending on the actual project and what it might need? Or can we say it might be option B or option C depending on what the project needs?
Yeah, I can, I can imagine that there could be a couple of different options. And there may be, you know, qualifying if it's this kind of project, then this. You know what I mean? If it's this kind of project, then this. So I think that makes sense, a couple of different options. We, we're just trying to point at an initial policy that has a reasonable amount of clarity for all of the bodies, do you know what I mean? For the whole town that would be involved in it. And like I said, could be subject to change in the future. But like a starting point of how do we want to prioritize the number of the five meetings that we have?
You done with questions? Okay, I will open it up for public comment in this area. I see one in the room, Karen.
Three minutes. These are, these are more questions than comments. The first, well, really, a lot of the public hearing is to get public feedback, right? You want to hear from your residents. So my question is, is would something, so if we were to ask for feedback in a different way, such as through a survey or posting on the forum, asking for feedback, does that count as a meeting or is that a tool that could be used to supplement? That's question one. And then the only other question I had was, I noticed, Laura, in the options, you didn't have the subdivision committee meeting, yet they were one of the bodies that needed to be involved. And I just was wondering how, how, how that was going to get handled in those alternatives.
So as usual.
Talking about, you know, those scenarios A through C, I didn't see subdivision committee meeting. So I assume because there's like the fire marshal in that group, that, that has to get handled some other way. And that was just the question.
As usual, we'll take all of them and then we'll make a decision as to whether or not we want to try to address those. Let's see, do we have any other public comment?
Yeah, hold on just a second.
Oh.
No, hold on.
Do we know who this, this sounds like Nicholas.
It's Nicholas.
Yep.
Nicholas, are you trying to make a public comment?
I am trying to make a public comment.
Excellent. We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate, uh, uh, being recognized. My name is Nicholas Tark. I'm a resident at AD Hayfield Road. Uh, I have a couple of questions. And that is, one, uh, do we know how Redwood City or Menlo Park are handling the CEQA hearings, uh, issues? Two, would we expect there ever to be a legislative, uh, proposal coming in under SB thirty? Three, there's a thousand foot, excuse me, a thousand cubic yard, uh, 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 limit, uh, or threshold after which the development permit must come before the planning commission. I don't recall whether that's a discretionary or, uh, well, I guess whether, say, uh, legislative or adjudicative evaluation that needs to be conducted for the development permit that comes in. And that way I'm hoping you can refresh my recollection. And for, for health and safety issues, um, one, um, those are, are those handled, uh, outside the SB thirty, uh, process? And could those, um, lead to additional hearings? Such as another, uh, agency needing to make a determination? Or could there be instances where a health and safety issue that is germane to Portola Valley? Trigger a need for either a legislative hearing such as a modification to a, um, uh, a geologic map? Or, uh, conceivably a, uh, a fire designation or, or others such, or a dredge and fill kind of issue?
Okay.
I wanted to say, I will take my answer, uh, on the, on this, uh, on this.
Yes, so we'll come back as usual. We'll treat you just like the regular public, so we'll make a decision as to what questions we'll try to answer and when we get through all the input. Thanks, Nicholas. Let's see, I see Kristi Corley with hand up.
Yes, I was wondering how many conceptual reviews are in process from the housing element list? And if you could list the addresses? And how many preliminary reviews are completed as of date? And then my other comment was, uh, I didn't see our geological committee listed as an important committee. When we have the San Andreas Fault running through our town, I believe that the geological committee has to be one of those committees, uh, to advise. And I would, I would like to hear your comments on that. And actually, I would like to hear the answers to all the questions because they're so important.
Thank you, thank you, Kristi, but that's something we decide.
Was my time up?
No, but I was telling you, you wouldn't, that we will make a decision as to which questions we answer.
I, I get my full three minutes, so thank you. And let's see, I also am interested in how Redwood City and Menlo Park are dealing with SB three thirty. And we do know that Southern California, uh, being a year ahead of us in the arena cycle, has a lot of experience in this area and we can get advice from, um, that area. Skag as well. Skag is the A-bag. A-bag is Northern California, skag, Southern California. So we need to start looking at Southern California to, um, see what's going on with three thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I see phone number ending in seven, five, six, two. Please go ahead. I think you're on.
Great, thank you very much. Caroline Vertonghen, one hundred Palmer Lane. I would like to concur and, and, um, hope that you will take in all the comments and questions that the residents have raised, especially your committee members, because they're very important. As the, uh, the SB law that you proposed is up to interpretation. And, um, when we read the, you know, the, the, the experts of what is going on in Berkeley or other rural towns, it's completely different than, than San Mateo and Redwood City. Please remember, we are a rural town, we have our general plan, we have our municipal code, and I hope that staff recognizes this. And I, I, I really congratulate the committee members who really understand this. And we have committee members, we have committees. This is residents who volunteer, and we would like to govern with, with our expertise. Because what the consultants bring forward is completely different than our experience. And we're kind of tired of it because they're very expensive and they don't bring solutions. Secondly, I really appreciate Mr. Tark. You know, it depends on what the staff proposes, because so many projects, or at least I knew a few, that are CEQA exempt because the staff decided that it was going to be less than a thousand square yard, uh, fee, uh, square yard of soil removal, and it didn't end up like that. You can take seventy-seven Palmer Lane as an example. We have so many issues in Portola Valley, and I don't understand why this is taken seriously. So I hope that the new staff will recognize what Portola Valley is. We're not Redwood City, we're not Menlo Park, we are very unique, we have a general plan, and we have many volunteers and experts who want to volunteer to make this work. And so I hope that you will listen to those members who are on this committee, who ask questions, and I hope you will answer these questions. Thank you.
All right. I do not see any other questions. So I will close the public comment and we'll bring it back for discussion. I bet Linda has something to say.
I'll wait my turn.
Go for it.
I'm for the chair. Do you want to direct staff on what questions you want to answer?
Yes, I do want to do that. Ronnie, any particular ones you want to cover in there? I thought there were a lot of good ones. So to kind of go forward.
I guess any of that staff would heard that you, that you want to reply to in particular.
How about we do it, sorry, how about we do it that way? How about, how about we say?
Do my best?
Yeah, do your best. Yeah, 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 because I think a lot of them were really good questions, so.
Yeah.
Um, so from Karen, um, she's asking about could we receive feedback in a different way that doesn't count as a meeting? I think yes, I agree with that. And I think this is, um, a great example of why we do this, of why we have these conversations. There are great technology tools that could be used. There's, you know, all kinds of, um, complicated and not so complicated ways that this could be done. And I think this would be a really interesting approach to take to this, to collect public comment at different phases that could be then given to each of the bodies at the different stages. So I think that's great. There's a question about the subdivision committee. And I think in my first option, I did include the subdivision committee because I don't want to assume that people don't want to have the subdivision committee. I just wanted to put it out there for people to think about. And there was a question about, you know, fire review. So I want to emphasize that for these projects, the normal, we call them reviewing departments or reviewing agencies would still always review. So there would still be a fire district review, there would still be town geologist review, there would still be engineering review, there would still be plan check, there would still be all those things that normally happen by our professionals would still happen. If the subdivision committee didn't happen, it just means all those people wouldn't get together again. They would just supply their comments in ultimately for planning commission consideration. Okay, on Nicholas's questions, I don't know about Redwood City or Menlo Park and the CEQA issue. I don't know if you know that, um, how they're interpreting CEQA and SB three thirty. I don't know that. I mentioned in, um, my memo, uh, what some larger cities have done on the, on the CEQA issue. San Francisco has determined that it does not apply to public hearings that are, um, uh, required by CEQA. And I did actually want to trace back, uh, sort of connect the dots to Commissioner Brother's question. I went back to the statute and reminded myself that this interpretation flows from subsection D of this section we're looking at. It's the six, five, nine, oh, five, point five. And it says, nothing in this section supersedes limits or otherwise modifies the requirements of or the standards of review pursuant to Division thirteen, blah, blah, blah. Section twenty-one hundred of the Public Resonance Code, that's CEQA. So basically we're saying nothing in here, this five-minute rule, it doesn't supersede anything you're required to do under CEQA. But then that sort of begs the question, well, what are you required to do under CEQA with respect to natural hearings and meetings? So anyway, it's an open question, something we can certainly look at into as staff in terms of what other, what other, you know, neighboring jurisdictions are doing on, on the CEQA issue and the sort of in the five meeting rule in general. And certainly we can confirm, but my general knowledge of those cities is they have a streamlined design review process anyway, particularly Redwood City, of course. But Menlo Park in recent years is approving a really large number of housing units. Um, and then there was a question about grading, the thousand cubic yard of grading for planning commission, that threshold. So it's definitely not legislative. And will map modifications, I believe, would be considered legislative because it's a decision about changing the map, which is the policy. But I don't think the grading review that planning commission does would fall under that category. So I think that a planning commission review that includes the grading trigger is discretionary and would count as one of the five meetings. And then talking about health and safety, um, I touched on this just a minute ago, all of the I touched on this just a minute ago. All of the normal health and safety reviews would still occur. So people would still have to go through their normal process to get their geotechnical investigations, to have all of those reviewed, meet all the fire code, meet all the requirements for either septic or sewer, whatever the case may be. The West Bay Sanitary could still do their process in terms of connecting to sewer. That would not count against anything here. And the county could still do their normal review if a project was on septic. So all of that would fall within the kind of professional and technical reviews. So in that regard, all the health and safety reviews would still be completed. There may be a case where another agency would have to make a determination. So an example with that would be West Bay Sanitary. Sometimes if you're annexing into their district, their body has to make a decision, and that would be exempt from the five meeting rule. So that does not count against the town. There's going back to the map modification. For anyone that doesn't know, the planning commission has the authority to approve individual modifications to our geologic map when there is evidence to support that change. My interpretation, we Catherine and I have not confirmed on this, but my interpretation is that is legislative. So that would not count against the five if there was a map modification. Of course, we'd have to confirm that. And then I think I've answered the question about fire reviews. We're working with the fire district, and there may be in future years additional studies that would be completed on individual projects based on rules that may come into effect in the future. So when those rules start to come up, the town and the fire district will be working on those jointly. Then we would need to see how that fits into this process. But those kinds of individual reviews, if I had to estimate, are probably at least a year away from where we are today. And I would imagine that we haven't confirmed this yet, that would all be part of the technical review process. It would not take place at a public meeting format. So I don't anticipate any items related to fire safety that would, you know, really change the discussion that we're having here tonight, based on what we know. Christie asked if there's any conceptual reviews of any projects from the housing element list. So I understand that to be our list of the inventory sites. And the answer to that is there are zero conceptual reviews. She also asked if there's any preliminary reviews from our housing element list. Again, that is zero. None of those projects have come forward in any form. And then she asked about the geologic committee and why it was not listed. And I want to make sure that people understand this. Because there has been some confusion, the geologic safety committee is not listed in the municipal code as a review body for subdivisions. Furthermore, in their own kind of charter bylaws, they are not listed to be a reviewer of development projects. And so it is intentional that the geologic safety committee is not listed. Their charge is to give feedback to the council on issues of policy of making the rules, not of implementing them on an individual project basis. So we do, of course, have the town geologists, and their role is to review individual projects for compliance with state law as well as our local codes, as well as the the building codes and the other laws that may apply to that specialty. I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. So that's what best I can do on the questions. Did we cover everything? Okay, great.
Excellent, thank you. So now we can have a discussion of of these items on there. And I guess the, again, the net of it is, what do you want me to take into? What I'm looking for is what do you want me to take to this meeting? Well, there, but obviously, any discussion is okay.
I do. You know, maybe some of you that have worked with me for a few years know, I really wish some things in government and the planning commission would be more efficient. Still get the same input and think about projects, but do it more with a decision-making focus, meaning, you know, collect the big info, think what the strategy is, then go to the medium things, then work on the details. And I think sometimes we get lost and start working on details and then back up and go. And um I feel like we lose the public when we take some notable examples, you know, seven meetings for some topics. You know, people come to some meetings, but they don't stay till the end. They don't come to the next meeting. We just don't get as much public input as I think we could. And I feel like we even disenfranchise people that have a busy life, right, that work and have kids. I mean, they can't come for hours and hours and then come again for hours and hours. So my heart is in this. How can we do this? Still collect the info we want in town, still get the volunteers. I've been a volunteer on committees for a long time. I think it's a great process. But, you know, just crank up the speed, like, this is what we're going to talk about. This, we want to hear from everybody. We want to think about it, and we move on. So I want to make this work, not find a way to subvert what the state is asking for. My one thought is, Laura, on some of your proposals, thanks for that, because I work with examples best. The collecting committees at the beginning, I really like that. And I'd even like to expand. Is it possible that we could make the first meeting is conservation and bicycle? And what was the third one on that? Conservation and ASCC and planning? We all meet and talk at the beginning. I feel like there are, when people or a committee has a focus, you know, they got their focus, right? But often the tough decisions are when there's one committee has this twist and another committee has that twist, and then you gotta decide what to do. This example is going to be terrible, but let me just say there's a property and the conservation committee says, wow, that's the most beautiful tree ever. Be sure you keep that. And then the bicycle committee comes and says, oh, that tree totally blocks. The car is pulling out and you can't see a bike coming down. That's terrible. If that's all happening at one meeting, it's better, right? People can talk about it and at least air everything. And I even think it's good if the ASCC and the planning commission hear all that at once, rather than just a person reports or minutes or take input. So um, I don't know if this helps shorten the number of meetings, but I do feel like it would help the planning commission to just be part of those meetings, and then boom, we'd be educated, you know, up to the level at least of all the committees right away. So that's my one thought is, would it work to collect a lot of committees, a lot of all the interested parties kind of in the first meeting?
Linda?
Uh, yeah. Starting with Anne's first comment, I agree with efficiency. And in a perfect world, we'd get really good quality proposals that would allow us to move forward with appropriate consideration for parks, recreation, wetlands. And I I have a somewhat John's view of developers. We don't always, if they're trying to be economical, get that. So I want to make sure we have a vibrant process that allows the important input from this town, which generally comes to us via our committees. I also understand that we have a lot of public interest in things. Ben, Laura's quoted the things about how many people attend in the housing element activities. And I want to consider that an important value for us, that that doesn't necessarily mean we have to have more meetings. But we have to have well-publicized, focused meetings, whatever we do. So I guess I would go to a couple of questions. First of all, in terms of our committee structure, and I don't know them well enough to lay out which ones regularly talk to you and regularly don't and would have a role in this. But the five meetings only kicks in after the application has been deemed complete. Is there any possibility we could have interaction with our committees at the staff level prior to finding the application complete? And I'm not, I want to be perfectly clear. I I want to meet the five hearing rule. But I also see a legis, piece of legislation that uses the word hearing, which has a term of art elsewhere in the code. It raises a lot of questions for me. So I I want, I would think very much about whether or not we can get some sort of input from some of our committees before the application's even deemed complete. Second point, I do agree that there's going to have to be some way that committees are going to have to meet as a larger body. And I think Anne's suggested meeting under our auspices might be good. It might take away one of our meetings if our meeting becomes the meeting of the committees. But I I mean, I'd be willing to do that, although I've stayed much before 11, more like 9:30 or 10. But I think some somehow or rather, there's got to be a mechanism for the the bodies to meet meet together. And that does, I think, very much have to be a public meeting for the public participation that our town wants and appreciates. I would incorporate with that Karen Askis' comment about some form of input. I'm thinking of something comparable, but not identical to public comments under SEQA. Comments on topics that people would want to see addressed as we had that set of meetings. I don't know how Anne's comment on efficiency, how we limit that, how we develop the administrative record. I think in terms of administrative records, because I think in terms of defending lawsuits. So I I think in terms of how that would come together as a record. But I would, I would very much like to spend some time thinking about which committees could work together and and work with us, and which committees might possibly be able to provide input to the staff before the application is deemed complete, as long as it's understood that that information would be made public afterwards. I think we always have to save a meeting for the council. And I think, I guess my my third, my third point here is, I absolutely would not include SEQA in this. Public meetings and SEQA are may or may not even be required. And the way I read the section that that Catherine went back and pointed out to me, I personally don't see why we would shoot ourselves in the foot and count SEQA as part of our meetings. There's obviously big towns that have already chosen to do it, excluding any SEQA meetings from this. You know, the building trades lobbyists who wrote this law could just have easily put it into SEQA, and they chose not to, or they didn't think of it. And so I wouldn't read it in on ourselves personally. I had one other point, which is just sort of left me here. I guess, I guess, I guess what I started to say before, I think we always have to leave one meeting for the town council, especially if it does involve SEQA. Their their decision is the decision that is the appealable decision, so we have to have that decision. I guess my final thought. And Laura, you know our code. I don't know our code very well. But over the longer haul, I think it might be worth, you know, I can make work for you now that you're not going to be here. But over the longer haul, it might be worth thinking about how we have these committees set up. I didn't realize any of our advisory committees, other than the planning commission and the town council or NASCC, were actually in the code, but you said that one of them was in our code. I would like to know which ones are actually in the town code, because that gives us less flexibility if it's in the code. If it's in our handbook, we might have more flexibility. So those are my observations.
Okay, Ronnie?
Eliminating the subdivision committee meeting made a lot of sense to me. And then I, yeah, I think, I mean, we basically have to group some of these meetings together in order to fit. I might be a little bit concerned about having all of those committees together in one meeting. It sounds a little overwhelming. Of the options that Laura laid out. If you look at example B and example C. Example B had two planning commission meetings, and example C had two ASCC meetings. And so if you maybe eliminated those double meetings and get down to four, and so the four would be joint trails and BPTS, joint conservation and ASCC, and then planning commission and town council. So that's four, and then there's one extra that would be maybe a wild card, depending on the needs of the project or something like that. Yep, that was my thought.
Okay. I think we're finished with that topic.
Did you want to give your input?
No. I didn't have it. Well, I can say I didn't really have anything that you guys didn't already thought, I think, think about, said, whatever.
I do have one more thing to add, which is which committees and advisory committees and other things get mushed together, maybe a function of the project. So I'm not sure there's a rule that we could set forth.
There may be more than one option here.
To the chair, I just wanted to make one observation in terms of grouping the planning commission with other other committees. I would have to think about this a little bit more, but I would be inclined not to do that, because the planning commission is a decision-making body. And when you make those decisions, you need to make them in an unbiased way. And if you've already met with other committees previously, there's a chance that you could indicate, you know, make sort of pre-decisional statements. So I would, I would generally keep yourselves separate.
And I just wanted to clarify in terms of the committees that are listed in the code with review authority are the ones that I included in the staff report and included as the examples. Okay, so they are conservation, trails and paths, and bicycle pedestrian traffic safety. So those are specifically listed as bodies that are supposed to provide feedback when there's a housing project with a subdivision. And in other areas of the code where there's not a subdivision, it's not listed in that way. But again, we were trying to address the most complex projects.
Okay, helpful, thank you.
Great.
Could the I'm sorry, but could the ASCC have the sort of parent meeting that Anne was referring to? And have some of these people participate in one of their meetings? I guess not. They're very specific in their authority.
They're very specific. I see overlap between conservation and ASCC, but I don't necessarily see overlap with the other committees in the same way.
Thank you.
ASCC wouldn't have the issue of being a decision-making body and being maybe.
I don't think so in this case, in the same way. They're not, they wouldn't be making, we're, we're assuming that these are projects that are within the planning commission's final authority. Depending on the nature of the housing project, it is technically possible that there could someday be a project that is only within the authority of the ASCC for approval and not the planning commission. But then this issue is not the same one, right? Because then we have more meetings available.
Okay. Let's close that.
Great.
And then the next item on the agenda is the update on the housing element. And next step.
I have a brief presentation for you. Give me just a minute. Accidentally named them kind of the same. They both say update to planning commission. This looks like the right thing. Okay, so just brief update, wanted to make sure that the planning commission knows what's been happening lately. We talked about this at a recent council meeting, and there was a request by members of the public, this commission, council, lots of people, that the planning commission have this conversation as well. So I always remind people, we have this fabulous table that lists all of the meetings that's happened on the housing element. I'm not 100% sure, right? I think we're at 43. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, right? I think we're at forty-three meetings and about a hundred and forty-five hours right now. So reminder, um, on March twenty-fourth, the council took action on the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration as well as the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the M M R P. Um, they adopted an addendum to the M M R P, then incorporated the Targan Brothers topics that you all, um, talked so much about. Um, the council also committed to pursue what we've been calling the seven requested mitigations from Woodside Fire Protection District. So those were submitted to the council on the day of the meeting and the council responded to those by making reference to them in their adopting resolution. The council also, um, expressed their intent to adopt the safety element by October of this year. So at that time, that's where we thought we were. Um, and the council also made a commitment to include measures that are at least as protective as the twenty-ten safety element. So this is a specific statement that the fire marshal made that they wanted to make sure that the council was committed to maintaining the um, policies that they thought were most important from the twenty-ten safety element. Then on May tenth, the council adopted the housing element. And, um, remember at that time, the, the town completed what we were calling a self-certification. Um, so the housing element was adopted and we self-certified the housing element to say that we thought it was compliant with state law. And this was the best practice. At that time, it was a potential safeguard against the builder's remedy. But we all knew that that was an untested approach, but we were trying to be conservative and be protective as we could for the town. Um, also at that time, the council adopted the conforming general plan amendments to ensure consistency with the other elements. So then we got our H C D comments back. Um, they're included as an attachment from the end of July. We received a new H C D reviewer. Um, this is a very common practice that's happening right now. Um, and in reality, what we have learned is that many of the H C D reviewers, um, left the employment of H C D in the course of this process. So a bunch of people quit. Um, no one wants that job. Um, and so most of the people who are left are either new reviewers or most of the supervisors, um, from what we can tell are still there. So the result is a lot of the supervisors are reviewing housing elements themselves. So that's good and bad. You know, it's hard to have a new person because as you all know, we spent so much time trying to develop rapport and help our previous reviewers understand, um, our context. So that was unfortunate. The good part though, is that our new reviewer is a supervisor. So she is, um, more able to give us definitive advice because she doesn't have to clear it with anybody else. So that's the good part. Uh, the result though, is that they are even more overwhelmed than they have been. Um, for the last two years, trying to review all the housing elements. Um, you know, Southern California took much longer than they expected. And so they're reviewing both regions at the same time and nobody thought it would happen that way. So it's, um, it's been tough for them as well, um, to try to move through this. She did acknowledge that the town's housing element is different than most housing elements. She said that, she was like, this is not typical. I see that you're doing something different here. So I did feel like fundamentally, she kind of got where we were coming from in terms of not using really standard approaches of just upzoning a ton of property. Um, so I did feel like she understood that. We did take some time to talk about our key constraints, but especially related to fire safety and geologic safety. And in going through that with her, I did, I did believe that she reviewed those sections of the housing element where we went through all of those constraints maps and like talked about how we had made these choices and why. The letter itself is very strongly worded. Um, people were very disappointed. Everyone was very disappointed when it came in. Um, we do know though, that they, they use template language. They cut and paste. Um, and as a regulator myself, you know, I can kind of relate. The formal letter is always going to be more strongly worded than the conversation that you have with somebody. And we did find that to be the case. Um, we've met with her once. She was very collaborative in that meeting. Um, she had some ideas about how to address some of the items. She told us that she was willing to provide some examples. She even said she would draft some language for the town. So we came out and I, I have had colleagues in other cities that have gotten similar feedback. Like, oh, the letter was terrible, but then I got in the meeting and they really helped me out. So we came out of this first meeting very optimistic. Like, okay, we're going to work this out. You know what I mean? We're going to get there. Um, all will not be surprised to hear that since that first meeting, we have not gotten a lot of response back from her. So she did send us, um, some examples and some materials that she wanted us to look at. Um, but we've had trouble scheduling another meeting with her. We do now have one on the books, but it's taken longer than we expected. Um, so it, it continues to be bumpy. Um, but she is certainly, um, professional, um, in terms of her like demeanor. And I, I do believe that she is trying to help, but I think that she has a lot of things, um, that she's working on. And so it's, um, frustrating to be in that position. Um, but we've checked in with other, you know, local jurisdictions and other people are in a similar position. And we, um, we asked for a twenty-one elements meeting, um, to see how people were doing and hear what kind of comments they were getting. And I was actually pretty encouraged for where we are compared to one, where some of the other cities are. So some of the other cities are still getting strong comments about their sites and the feasibility of their sites. We are not getting those kinds of comments. And so at least there's a positive there, um, that we are in, I would consider to be more of a fine tuning mode. Um, as opposed to, you know, still arguing with them about housing sites. So, um, our technical team has done preliminary analysis, you know, based on that phone call, the emails that we've, you know, exchanged. Um, and so we are just pointing out so that people are kind of, you know, knowing how we're viewing this. There is five comments in the latter that we think have the largest policy implications and also the most effort to resolve. So the opt-in housing diversification program. Um, she had some concerns about the interplay between different housing laws. And if not constructed carefully, then, um, the limit or the cap on the opt-in housing diversification program could be considered to be illegal. She said she was going to provide us some additional information on this. So depending on how she approaches it, you know, and what she's willing to offer, this may be relatively easy to solve, but we don't know yet. Um, there's statements about the zoning and the minimum density. And this is an item that, um, our staff and legal and technical team will have more information for the planning commission and the community about. We're continuing to work on this issue. It's a very nuanced part of the law. And it has to do with timing and what's adopted when, and then what becomes the requirement. So we're deep into this one, so I don't want to speak too much to it because we're still working on it. Um, but our preliminary assessment of this is we will need to come back and have additional discussion with the community related to minimum density of some of these sites. So the planning commission will be hearing more about this. Um, next is related to ADUs. Um, they have gotten very strict, um, and really want concrete things to be in the housing element. If the ADUs are not constructed or if they're not made available at the affordable income levels. So if those things don't happen, they are looking for more accountability. So they're talking about, um, you know, stronger backups. We're still working on what does that mean? Um, this is an area where some people think there's some overreach on H C D's part that they're kind of going beyond what the law says. Um, so this is something we need to, to talk more with them about. Um, when I raised this with some other colleagues, they're not really having the same problem. But they are having problems, well, maybe not to the same degree as us. But they are having problems, some of them still with H C D accepting their number of projected ADUs. So, um, what we took away is there was like an implication that our proposed number of ADUs would be accepted. As long as there's a program to really back it up if the affordable units are not constructed. So it's kind of another good and bad. At least we're not arguing about the number. We're just arguing about what happens if they don't get built. So good, bad there. Um, on the Dorothy Ford Park, um, site. Um, also positive, negative. There was not a question about the site in terms of it being feasible. So that's a positive. But, um, they want the implementation measures to be strengthened. And so they gave us some examples of what some other, um, cities are doing, um, for development of city-owned properties. So we need to work with them on, you know, exactly how much detail. Um, but the positive side for the way that, that the town has been viewing the site, they're not, they don't seem to be questioning the feasibility. And they didn't expressly question what we've been referring to as the sunrise. No, so they didn't expressly say, you're waiting too long to do this, right? They didn't question the motivation. They more said, they didn't say you can't take a little time. They more said you have to make stronger commitments when that time has passed. That's how I, I interpreted the feedback. So still some work to do, um, on that one. We want to make sure we've got it. And then there's a lot of comments across a lot of jurisdictions related to A F F H, affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, and so this is tough because we all used a highly qualified consultant to help us write these portions, like pretty much everyone in the county did. And we all thought we nailed it. And then we all came back with kind of standard language. It's kind of like eh, you didn't really do it the way we wanted you to. Um, so we've circled back to our, um, consultants. I think this is mostly related to language. Um, so we've got a lot of the things that we need. We need to talk about some of it differently. Um, but I don't think from our initial conversation that we have to really change a lot of things. Um, there's some kind of scary language in the letter that talks about, you know, units not being spread throughout the community for A F F H reasons. I think that's very standard language. I think pretty much everybody got that in the cut and paste. Um, so I, I don't interpret that as a big impediment at this point. All of this is subject to change. This is just, um, how we're interpreting it so far. So we went to council about a month ago. Um, we recommended to council that we engage in this sort of back and forth process with the H C D reviewer. You know, send some language to her, ask for a meeting, do it over email and try to get her um, preliminary assurance. You know, she can't guarantee anything until we formally resubmit. But we do understand that they can give preliminary feedback and say, yes, we expect that to be accepted or no, that won't be accepted. So we want to engage in that back and forth process for now. Um, we updated the council that staff cannot complete this work without additional consultant support. So as you all know, Urban Planning Partners has been, um, our primary consultant for this work. And the contract, um, amount for that and for the I S M and D is depleted. So we talked to the council about additional funding. They supported like interim funding while we were kind of working on some of these details. And then we've been working with the consultant to develop a new scope of work and budget for the next phase. And we are bringing that back to the council, um, next week at their, um, September thirteenth meeting. So looking at a contract amendment, so we'll have an update for the council next week as well as a contract amendment for our consultant. So those are the next steps that we see happening. Um, we've been working on the relationship to the zoning code amendments. So the planning commission knows that we paused, you've made significant progress on the zoning code amendments to implement the housing element. Then, um, what's been happening over the summer is we, um, on our technical team have been continuing to work on those. So we now have like basically a full set of code amendments to implement, to build on what you've already reviewed and fill in some of the gaps of what we didn't have yet. So it's been undergoing our technical review. So a lot of people have asked like, why didn't you talk to planning commission about it? Because we were working on it. These folks right here, uh, along with our consultant, we've been working on it. Um, so that has really come a long way and in my opinion is in good shape. Um, but now we have this situation, you know, several times throughout this process, someone has said to me, well, we put the cart before the horse. Right? And people have been kind of confused about the process and what was going to happen next and what was happening when, because we were trying to maximize our timeline. And now we're in the position that we're thinking about it much more linear. That we need to nail down some of these things in the housing element. You know what I mean? To make sure we know what we're doing there. And then make any necessary code amendments to go with that. And bring those things forward to the planning commission, kind of one step at a time in a logical progression. Um, so that everyone can track these final steps. And so, um, I have on my whiteboard, you know, now we're doing the horse and then the cart. Okay, so that's what you can expect, um, for the upcoming meetings. So the housing element is going to lead, followed by the implementing zoning code amendments.
Do you have a date when the, you're trying to submit the housing element back to the state?
Um, we don't have a specific date. Um, we're a little too early in the conversations with H C D to have a specific date. Um, we are trying to be realistic about how long all of this is going to take. And we're working on it like now, today, tomorrow, we'll be working on it. So we'll have more information, um, for the council, um, for next week. So people that are tracking it, you know, check out the council packet, watch the council meeting. And, you know, planning commission can get an update after that, but we're literally writing it right now.
There'll be questions in the bit. You better finish first.
Okay. Um, so also really important as part of this whole process, um, are the, um, Woodside Fire Protection District recommendations. And so this is just a reminder. Um, on March twenty-ninth, they submitted what we've called the seven requested mitigations. Those were included in the adopting resolution. Um, and then you were all quite familiar with what we've called the thirteen key approaches to fire safety. Those came through the planning commission process, were like generated by the fire marshal and myself through planning commission. Um, I believe in February. And so we've had these two different documents. Um, and so we've been trying to work through those and make sure we understand them. So town staff met with the fire district staff and, um, legal counsel to discuss how to implement those. And then on July sixth, um, they submitted what, like written guidance, like a letter back to us on how they wanted to see those things implemented. So then we went to council, um, and got council direction to take those two lists, the seven requested mitigations and the thirteen key approaches and bring them together into one document. That could be like a work plan, an action plan for both agencies that the public could understand. And we have been referring to that because we can't help it as the seven plus thirteen. Okay, so we've been working on that document with the fire district. Um, we have a draft of that prepared. We met with the fire district just this morning, um, to review that draft. Our team, their team, legal counsel. Um, I've become aware that the fire district, um, has appointed a new fire marshal that will, that is overlapping with Dawn, and then Dawn will retire. And then, and the new fire marshal, um, will take over that position. So I learned that for sure today. Um, so hopefully they release some additional information, but they are working on a big overlap. So we met with both of them. And their new, um, legal counsel, new in the last few months, has really, I think, helped us to confirm, um, he brings like more specialty knowledge. Um, and so we've been able to confirm things with Catherine and with him to really understand who's responsible for what. And so, um, we will definitely distribute this document widely when it's completed. Um, so that people can see it and understand it better. And I think it will help all of us to really, um, understand how these things can be implemented. So I think this is a really big milestone that we've got this document that if I had to guess, it's maybe a couple of weeks away from going out for public distribution so soon. Um, and I think everybody, it'll help a lot. It helped me a lot to just spend time on it and bring these things together. And I think everybody, it'll help a lot. It helped me a lot to just spend time on it and bring these things together. And then these are just some related updates and reminders. Builders remedy is a thing. We don't know how this is going to pan out. You know, if you're watching the papers in other communities, there are applications. We don't know if that's really going to happen or not. We don't know how people are going to fight them, but we all just want to remind ourselves that technically the town is susceptible to potential. Builders remedy application until the housing element is certified. So we self-certified and now they would come back and be like, oh, that's cute, right? Because now you have an HCD letter that says that you don't comply. And ultimately a court would decide, but we certainly don't want to be in that kind of position if we can avoid it. So I, I mentioned the zoning code amendments. The deadline under state law is January of 2024. We'll be talking to the council about the timeline for this, but that is very soon. And you all know that your planning commission work is well underway, but we posited due to priorities. We also talked to the council a little bit about the safety element. We want to remind everybody that the current version of the safety element is in effect while the town works on the future draft. We've had members of the public as well as the fire marshal that have really emphasized to us that certain provisions of the current safety element are very important for fire safety. We certainly recognize that they are in effect. So we just want to make sure everybody knows that. And we talked to the council about adoption and just from a realistic feasibility point of view. Very difficult to be working on these initiatives at the same time. And so we got some feedback from the council about priorities. And so for now, there is an assumption that the adoption will be delayed. At least for a while. So we are not actively working on the safety element right now. And we'll, staff will continue to get feedback from the council about how that fits together with the other pieces. So that concludes my update and I would be happy to take questions.
Are you looking for questions in any particular fashion? Are you looking for like from us from? Questions about just what's happening or are you looking for detailed questions of stuff that's in here? Any or both or?
However, the planning commission would like to use its time. We're really responding to commissioner and public interest and having an opportunity for you to receive an update and discuss. We are not looking for any particular feedback. And so you don't need to take any action. It's just an opportunity if you wish to ask questions.
Questions from the commission. Start with Ron.
So the Woodside Fire Protection District currently has these draft fire ordinances that are out. On fire preparedness committee is looking for public comment on them. Does that have any relation to the seven plus 13 items?
Yes, it does. Because two of the items on the key approaches, the 13 key approaches, were related to those ordinances. And so when we release the seven plus 13 work plan. It will provide updated information from the fire district on how they are approaching those things. So they will provide the update so that everybody knows what their status is. My understanding is that they shifted their perspective a little bit. One of the ordinances they're pursuing and one of them they're going to wait to pursue. But that information language will, will come from them for everybody.
Hopefully this is another scope, but those, those draft ordinances that are currently out for review, will those come before the planning commission or what's the process for those?
Those will not come before the planning commission. So there's a couple of things going on. There's a proposed fire code. From the district and the district has already approved it, but it does have to be ratified by the town council. So that's a town council action. It doesn't have much bearing on the planning commission's activities. So it's not something that we would bring to you. And that is scheduled for next week's town council meeting. But that's specifically related to the fire code. And if anyone's not familiar with that, it's like the building code, but related to fire safety things. Implemented on a ministerial level as part of plan. So that's happening. And then there are other ordinances that they are considering. That are within their authority as the fire district and not necessarily the town's authority to approve or not approve. And so there's conversations going on about what the public process is and how the wildfire preparedness committee will be involved in the review of those. But they are primarily related to vegetation management at this point. And so that's not typically related to planning commission's purview. So I wouldn't expect the planning commission to have any role in that discussion.
In the HCD letter, there's a comment about opt-in program, the zoning needed, needing to be completed within three years. Is that something that we were expecting?
That comment is mostly because they didn't understand how we intended to implement the opt-in program. So we explained to her that it would be just a program of the general plan. It would not require rezoning. And we need to adjust the language, but she seemed receptive to that approach.
Okay. And then this thing about the zoning code amendments needing to be completed by January 2024. Like, how does that play out if our housing element is not approved yet? Do we still make those changes?
So this is where we get into the whole like chicken out of the egg or we get stuck in a loop, however you want to think about it. My best thinking about this right now is we have to remember that we, our general plan and our zoning code have to be consistent. So we can't adopt a zoning code that's not consistent with our general plan. So then the assumption is that those two things have to go together. Right? Either it has to be housing element, then zoning, or it has to be all win package. So what's most likely to happen is that will be combined as all win package and adopted all at once. And at this point, it does not seem likely. It will be by January of 2024.
And so then what happens? What's the consequence?
The, okay, so this gets a little bit tricky. Okay, I'll do my best. My understanding is that the. Here we go. The, okay, the, the consequence of not adopting the zoning by 2024 is that. The zoning code amendment can no longer be a program of the housing element. Instead, it has to be adopted concurrently. So right now our housing element says, we commit to doing a zoning code update in the future. That future action makes it a program, right? And so now we have to do them together. So that is the most recent consequence. That, that would be my best explanation.
And I would just add to that, I just sort of furthers the exposure of the town to builders remedy applications. The January 30, January 20, the other consequence would be if, if we had a certified housing element, we would lose that certification if we didn't. Get a rezoning done by January 2024, but we don't have a certified housing element yet. So that consequence doesn't apply to us. So it's primarily what Laura explained and then this continued exposure.
So then I guess if. So we potentially wouldn't be able to do the self, self-certification or self-adoption. We would have to wait for HCD's certification so that then we could adopt it and do the zoning code amendments at the same time.
That's what we anticipate at this point, based on all the best available information. That we would not again self-certify and adopt, that we would submit to HCD for their certification.
And then the last question, which I mean, I think you kind of touched on, but that just in general, like the process going forward for actually like making the changes for the cases where. We need to change something, we need to make a decision about what's going to change. So that'll, that'll come to the planning commission in the meeting to make those calls or?
Yep, that'll come to a planning commission meeting. So what we anticipate is this kind of back and forth with HCD. To see like what we think they will accept. There might be some things that have some options, you know what I mean, of things they might be accept. But some of them might be pretty specific, like 24, 23, like, you know what I mean? Some of them might be very numerical or like very specific. And so then the technical team will bring all of those together. And we anticipate bringing it all at once at this point to the planning commission. So we've already done the back and forth with HCD. We have what we think they will accept. And then that comes through the planning commission and then to council and then resubmitted to HCD for certification.
Can we limit it to five minutes?
That would be wonderful.
I'm stymied by this process and the difficulty of the interrelation, interrelatedness of the pieces. And I guess my first question is. Are you absolutely, is it absolutely necessary to redo the housing element initially? Or is there an alternative? The alternative that comes to my mind is what I used to do all the time when I got comments like this from. Agencies, which is to just put their comment, our response, their comment, our response. And you have a lot of that in your head, but I guess my question is, have you thought of a response item by item letter with the woman you're working with? Towards the goal of trying to reduce the number of specific areas of uncertainty. I know eventually we will have to resubmit the housing element, but I'm thinking in these terms. In terms of is there a possibility that we could possibly reach agreement on a number, enough of the differences? And I don't want to go into the details here, but enough of the differences that we could proceed, for example, with the zoning code. That would be one more way to reduce our exposure. To me, the other advantage of doing a line by line item rather than resubmitting the housing element is. I mean, I, I think this agency has, has done what appears to me to be overreaching. And if you resubmit the element, then what new projects are they going to, new problems are they going to find the next time? Whereas if you do it in the context of taking their comment letter and specifically working out the response to comments in each instance. You don't open the whole element up to an additional evaluation. So I don't know if you've thought about doing it that way. I don't, in your mind, you probably have a piece of paper somewhere that says, oh, that one's done, that one's hard, that one's not done. But when it gets the opposite of accumulated, disaccumulated into concepts, it's hard for me to track that back to this. And hard, hard for me to see how, if, if it's even possible to separate out some of these pieces and still make progress. Do you get the point I'm trying to ask?
Absolutely. And the answer I'm happy to say is yes. So we have prepared a matrix of the specific comments and we did this last time, but there's a difference now and let me try to explain it. Last time, there was a giant matrix of all of their comments and how we had responded to them. Okay? But we, the town, also made other changes to the housing element. So by making other changes, we opened ourselves up to new comments. Okay? So that's why some of the comments, people were like, well, that's not fair. Those are new comments. Well, that's because we, the town, made changes. Okay? So we opened ourselves back up to that. This time around, we don't have any policy reason, because we've already gone through all that process, to make any other changes. So we have a matrix that includes, you know, we've populated it, here's what the comments are, here's how we propose to address it. Sample language, and that is exactly what we'll use with the reviewer in the back and forth process. And so that's what we'll try to get her to sign off on. We'll say we're not, we don't propose to change anything else. Here's what we would change and here's how we would change it. Then hopefully we get her blessing on that. And then we create more certainty for ourselves as much as possible. I think your language was reduce the risk. I totally agree.
Is it at all possible? I mean, it's a complex negotiation and. Without many boundaries on their part and limitations on our part, I would, I would, I would subscribe. Is there any way to do it iteratively in a way that might allow us to make the zoning code changes?
We've talked about it on our staff and consultant team. And I'm afraid it would add additional complexity without much benefit. And I think, you know, we were just talking about the consequences of not completing by 2024. In reality, the town, it's, it's probably most logical to adopt these items together at this point anyway, the housing element and the implementing zoning. So everyone can understand how the pieces go together. So I really thought about, you know, what's most efficient for the town. And that's why I wrote, you know, horse and then cart on my whiteboard. To remind myself that right now, kind of a simple back and forth with the HCD reviewer. One good package, you know what I mean? Like planning commission, council, straightforward seems like the way to go.
So you have the matrix. Have you submitted, have you, in your discussions with her, has she had that matrix in front of her yet or?
Not yet.
Okay. And will that happen that you, you said you had something scheduled, but not scheduled when you wanted it to be, but?
Yeah, we have a meeting with her next week. So it'll happen at the meeting next week.
Okay. And that's an in-person meeting?
Oh, no, Zoom.
They're all Zoom. So she's not come here at all to see any of our physical limitations?
And she will not. People have asked me that. We could invite her all day, every day and she will not come.
A picture's worth a thousand words.
Oh, we've shared pictures, we've shared maps, we've done a lot of that kind of stuff with, with all of our HCD reviewers.
Some of her comments just seem to not show any recognition of our physical, our physical location. That's the main reason why. I think those were my main questions. Why don't you go ahead?
You'll say January 2024. Is that January 31st or does it matter? Uh, it's the 31st. No, Ronnie asked my other question.
Okay. So I was curious about attachment two. Where, how did, this, this one looked new to me. And I was trying to figure out how it fit with all the other. The seven and the 13 and the, I got a little lost, to be honest.
I know.
So what was this one?
So attachment number two is the original format that the fire district's seven requested mitigations came to us. So on the, March 29th, on the day of the council meeting, that was emailed to us by the fire district's legal counsel. Yes, that document exactly. So it's, I just, we just included them in the way that they came to us. So there's no header, there's no date. So that's why I've tried to save them. And when we list them as attachments, we're trying to give the dates. So it's a little bit easier. And then there's another attachment that has a letter that does have letterhead, but no date. And that's the clarification of the seven requested mitigations. And that was submitted to us on July 6th.
Those are my direct questions. Those were both after the thing.
Yeah. So you never saw any version of the seven requested mitigation measures. You only saw the 13 key approaches.
I had some discussion on that item. We'll, we'll come back to that one. Do you have any more questions? Okay, like a comment. Man, Karen, first to the podium.
Just some questions. So I, I, as well as I think some others, submitted comments. To the town council meeting in early August about the housing element. And I'm wondering if those got shared with you guys? Because they were about the housing element or did, did that only go to the town council? That's one of my questions because I didn't resubmit my comments. Secondly, Laura, you mentioned that it sounds like there may be some increases to density. And, but then you also mentioned, and so the question on this is. If we increase density, that would technically increase the total number of units that could be built under the housing element. if we increase density, that would technically increase the total number of units that could be built under the housing element. Could we then take away somewhere else? But then you mentioned that if we make changes elsewhere, then we may open ourselves up. So I'm just wondering how we deal with that, because we don't want to end up with a plan that has even more units in it than we have, because we've got the buffer. And then, just curious, and I know you've mentioned that we can't include SB9 units in our housing element. But, and you'd mentioned we had one, I don't know, that had been permitted at the last meeting. But do we have any that are in the conceptual or preliminarian, preliminary phase? Just in terms of knowing what we've got with these SB9 units? And I'm also just curious if we've had any JADU, you know, again, conceptual preliminary permitted types of things. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. I see Rita Combs with her hand up, Rita, you're on.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. One of my comments was about the zoning code for January, but I thank you commissioners for asking that question and getting it mostly answered for me. Appreciate that. You know, the planning commission in this town since March had 13 possible meetings, and out of those meetings, only two were realized. All the other ones were canceled, some at the last minute, which was unfortunate, because it seems like everyone was waiting for this housing element to be approved. And while the safety element, which was supposed to be done in October, and a lot of the, the fire and the comments and the mitigation stuff was supposed to then be included in the safety element, which was promised to happen in October. And at one of the last council meetings, it was mentioned that there was money in the budget that was left over for consultants to work on the safety element, but still, there was no meeting to possibly move those things forward and no one to really ask, because when asking questions, weren't receiving any answers back. So I do understand the housing element is a priority, but these other things still need to get done. And not having meetings, you know, in this meeting now, things are promised and things are said that are going to be working on. So is there another process in our town to get some answers? If this particular group is, is not meeting, to see how things are, are moving forward? And I hope that in the future, you know, we get more notice about meetings that are happening, agendas thoroughly vetted about what is going to be talked about, not just information that everyone kind of already knows. And I am disappointed to not see the January 4th letter that was from the Woodside Fire Department. Most people act like it was a surprise for the March 29th letter from the Woodside Fire Department, but there was a letter on January 4th. And that should be included in the packet for tonight. Thank you for your time and for your work and volunteerism.
Thank you. Let's see. Phone number, oh, Catherine, Carolyn Bertonghen, you're up.
Great, thank you. I think Rita pointed out a very important comment. You know, you, you quote all these mitigation, you know, the fire mitigation, we have not seen it. I am now, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, but we have issues with the finances. You know, we, we were supposed to have a housing element, a safety element, we have not seen it. The latest we saw is that Laura asked for an extension and a new financial contribution to the budget. We don't even know if what has been proposed today is covering this, because with, when you look at the warrant list, it all goes back to 22. Nothing is covered for 23. We are so behind on updates, and I really appreciate all the questions from the commissioners, that we're so behind. And, and this is not a time to speculate on what HCD is coming back to. We know we have, you know, our town is in a deficit budget, and we have spent over, I believe, right now, we have spent over or close to a million dollars just for this housing element, and it's, we're not even close to it. So the new town council has made a safety a priority. And we have to abide by that. There's several committees who want to approach this. We have our charters, we are committed to make results or promote results, but we are so constricted by the consultants who seem to come up with data and, and reports that do not reflect what we as residents see and what we have reported to town council and other committees. So I'm very disappointed. I think it's very important that we have this, these seven, what is this, from the fire, fire department? We still don't see it, we've been asking for those documents, these are public documents requests, and we don't see them. So I hope you will support our efforts to make this safety an issue. You know, this is our, this is the most important issue. Housing, forget it, because we're so behind.
Carolyn, Carolyn.
I, I understand, but we're so behind on other issues. You have to protect your residents, and you're not doing it. So please, take this in consideration, thank you.
Let's see, we have Christie Corley, you're on.
Yeah, thank you, I had a question about the opt-in would be a CUP. But legal counsel is saying we would be subject to many of the housing laws, and we must write that in with legalities in mind. Can you explain that a bit more of what you mean by that? And I think that's my main question now, thank you.
See, Nicholas, did you have anything that you wanted to do? But I don't, yeah, there we go, now we got a hand. Go for it, Nicholas.
Thank you, I appreciate it. One, both to council and our housing director, I can only imagine how incredibly frustrating it must have been, as I'm sure that we all shared, to receive a letter like this from HCD. And I want to confirm that, so you, you found this kind of as jarring and as surprising as I'm sure that we did as well. There are several housing organizations, YIMBY Law and San Mateo Housing Leadership that have either verbally, or in the case of San Mateo Housing Leadership, have expressed written, written support for our housing element. I'm wondering if they've taken the opportunity to write in support, or whether we would consider having, asking them to write in support at this, at this point in time, and whether it would be considered to be beneficial to, to, to have them engage in, in that sort of way. The other question I have is the status of our housing element. There is a housing element that was adopted by council. And I believe it's in effect right now, and I believe that the SEQA mitigation measures and the conditions of approval are in effect. I'm also generally aware that there's litigation surrounding at least the SEQA portion of that document. And unclear as to what the current state of of effectiveness, the housing element that was adopted by the council is at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other public comments, so we will close the public comments. There's a small number of questions, you want to take a crack at them?
Yeah.
I think we have to break where it is.
Question from Karen about the public comments, no, those did not go to planning commission, they just went to council. In terms of increasing density, I don't want to speak too much about it until we've really, like, thought this through, you know what I mean? And I have, like, prepared comments on it. But there could be a situation where the number of units is increased. But we want to be thoughtful about how we're presenting that to you. In terms of SB9 units, we still just have the one SB9 unit, and it's not official yet, the building permit has not been issued for it. Unless it's just been in the last couple of days, but I don't, I don't believe the building permit has been issued. For JADUs, we have had kind of ongoing conversations with a small number, I would say, maybe four people, like that kind of neighborhood, is what I've heard from the planners, not necessarily, those are all going to go forward, but learning about what's available. There was a comment from Rita about the safety element being promised in October, I would disagree with the word promised. In a council meeting, I indicated that I thought it could be possible to have the safety element completed by October, that was way back in the spring. Generally, the way I would speak to Rita's comments is, there's a limited number of people that work here. And lately, it's been less. So we've been very short-staffed, doing the best that we can. Rita also asked about the January 4th letter. There was a letter that was submitted to the town by the fire marshal, which the fire marshal then asked to be withdrawn in his request, so that's why it's not provided. And there was a comment that the March 29th letter was a surprise, but maybe perhaps shouldn't have been. I, I can tell you, I was very surprised. I don't recall ever being more surprised. Caroline said that she was concerned that the public hadn't seen the seven mitigation measures. The seven mitigation measures are attached to tonight's planning commission packet. Christie asked about the opt-in, and if I could explain that a little bit more. The short version of this is that we are not allowed to put in place something that could be reduction or an impediment to housing, so you can't zone something and then unzone it, right? So you can't kind of change your mind about housing-related things. That's obviously layman's terms, but we're working that through, we don't have a detailed answer yet. But we are trying to construct the opt-in program with the intent from the community and not violate any housing laws, that's what we're working on. From Nicholas, I can confirm that it was jarring and surprising to get the letter from HCD. Less surprising than the March 29th letter from the fire district, but definitely like top five. The excellent point about the housing organizations, I'm very happy to say that I've continued to have conversation with San Mateo County Housing Leadership Council. And in my last conversation with their housing advocate, I did in fact ask them to put in additional comments in support of our housing element to HCD, and I would expect that they will do that. And then I think I would ask Catherine to weigh in on, like, this, the current status and effectiveness of the housing element and the ISM and D.
Yeah, so those documents have been approved, but as we know, they still require, you know, the, well, the housing on itself still does require certification to be effective and comply with state law. So I would guess that would put us sort of in a lim, legal limbo with respect to that document. With respect to the ISM and D, that has been approved. And while there is, and there is threatened litigation, but there has to date not actually been filed litigation. And this is public record, I'll, I'll share that the, the parties, meaning the town and the petitioner group have agreed to toll the SATs limitations. SEQA, SEQA challenges, SEQA is very unusual, and it has a very short SAT limitations, it only have 30 days from the date that, in this case, the ISM and D is approved to file litigation. But the, the courts have upheld tolling agreements. And so right now, the parties are under a tolling agreement that would, that would basically has extended, extended out the period of time, the current, the current tolling goes to November 10th, which is November.
November.
Yes.
That completes staff's responses to questions.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Not really, my, my discussion was my question, and.
You do that. I'm watching you.
I did a few things, thousands and thousands of hours, I tested my committee members. Yeah, I just, I crave for a, a clearer focus, I mean, I'd love to see that matrix, because comments just go all over the, all over the yard. Some of the comments are overreaching, I think, some of the comments seem to be things that are really already resolved, so I'd like to know how many real issues we have left of the issues that are, that are left in that letter. But that's for another time, I think, at this point, you're, you're still pointed together, so now I have no further comment.
No, I'm bummed that we, it's going to be harder, impossible to get it done by January 31st, 2024, I feel like we, the planning commission, of course, the staff, and many, many residents worked hard to get it done by last January. So it's a bummer that it's still in limbo, but the staff and the town council are, you know, working as hard as they can and doing the most sensible things with the reviewers, so yeah, I guess we'll live with it.
Ronnie? Nothing then. I had, I had a few, like, really specific things that I just wanted to pass along, having been through this. One was under the, the density stuff that came up. I was concerned that we didn't lose track of the Willow Commons concern in that forcing us to the higher density number might actually hurt them because of the assisted living thing, right? So that's, we actually dropped it back through to support the assisted living, which I, I think HCD would want us to do. So somehow we've got to make sure we don't lose track of that. And then the other one, really. So, yeah, why not? This attachment two, I mean, that looks like a huge legal morass if we were to go ahead and, and do these things. I look at number five, and it's like, it sounds good, right? You know, you don't worry about public health, but then it comes along and it says, oh, without any objective standards, if somebody objects, then we, you can block accessory dwelling units, you can block SB9, you can block bonus concessions, which which puts us in a weird position. If we were to adopt it, then our own residents could sue us for not following what we adopted. The owners of those properties could sue us because we're violating state law and state law. The state might come after us. So it's like, I sure hope people bet it that way. That's why I was against it, a legal council would actually send this to us. Anyway, that's just a comment. I think I'm done.
And just to the chair, we asked for clarification from the fire district to make sure that we understood their intent. And so then we got the July 6th letter and that process is ongoing, you know, through today. And trying to organize these items and explain them in a way that we understand what they're really looking for. And making sure that, you know, all the legal counsel has thought through the implications of everything. So that's really the process we're in right now is, is understanding.
Great, sounds good. Let's close this item and I think we've, oh, we've got any commission reports, staff reports in the minutes. Are there any commission reports? Staff reports?
Oh, you. I have five. I can run through them quickly.
Okay.
Ann and I attended the San Mateo Planning Commissioner Training. So this was like planning commissioners from across the county. There was a presentation about new housing laws. Presentation itself was kind of a whirlwind, but it was a nice gathering and nice to kind of meet other people. And there's. I did share the meetings with the planning commission. There is going to be another meeting on October 30th. And then I also followed the, I guess from there, there was a, we advertised the Institute of Local Government Planning Commissioner Training, which I think is a California statewide thing. That was back in June. And that, I also shared those slides and then there's also a, which are, the slides are good references, if you want to. And they have a planning commissioner handbook that's actually pretty good on the website. Then for ASCC meetings, I went to the June 12th meeting. Nothing too noteworthy, there was a entry gate that was not discussed too much and passed quickly. There was an architectural review of a new residence where, yeah. Some discussion about like the conservation easement there and they actually were removing a building that was encroaching on the conservation easement. Removing a large, very large equalitiveness from the conservation easement. But overall, there was enthusiastic support from the ASCC in the past. And then in the June 26th meeting, they elected a new chair, Jane Wilson, so his vice chair. Then we reviewed, they reviewed application for someone that was adding a second story above the garage, it exceeded eighty-five percent AMPA. But the topography of that site kind of moved that project makes sense and that passed three to zero. Then the last item, so Karen asked you at the beginning of the meeting commented on Parks and Rec and their desire for expanding the recreational facilities. And actually Karen asked you and how to use, the chair reached out to myself and Commissioner Brothers to, and we have a meeting scheduled with them this upcoming Friday. And I I guess just maybe sort of helping them think through this proposal and then maybe figuring out what the next steps should be. I, I believe that this will probably have to go to the town council and the town council will probably have to direct staff and the planning commission to look into this if that's what they want to do. But I welcome any comments from either staff or the other commissioners on that. That's it.
Since he mentioned my name, I'll say I wholly view this as a brainstorming session and I don't anticipate what the outcome might be. So I don't know if it's coming to planning position or the council. It's totally random, but yeah.
I think you get the process right. Only let's complement the decision on resource allocation. Staff reports, anything to add?
The planning commission is aware, but the public may not be, that I am leaving the town's employment. And my last day is September 22nd. And our new town manager, Sharif, is on the case. And he has identified an interim planning and building director and that is John Biggs. More information will be coming out to the community around this, but he is a highly qualified and very experienced planning and building director. He's been doing this a long time, very seasoned. So he and I are overlapping right now and he is getting up to speed on important town issues. So just wanted to put that into the record.
All right, well, I have to say, I'm going to be sorry to see you go. You've been a terrific asset for the town. Thank you very much for all you've done.
Thank you.
I'd second that. Been in long hours.
I'm just very sad. I feel like this housing element is amazing, even if HCD didn't see it exactly that way and write it in words. But it could never, never have gotten as far and good without you, Laura Russell.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge loss for us, but I just want to wish you luck with what we do next.
When will we meet the new interim? Interim Laura.
We have details to work out, obviously this is all happening right now. So you can expect, you know, additional communication to come from the town manager's office, more introductory materials. So more is coming, so I'm not sure yet what the schedule for that will be. But we're not having another planning commission meeting before September 22nd. Correct, this is the last. Yeah, so this is my last meeting with this. Yeah, doggone, okay. We do need to open up for public comments on commission or staff reports.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, does anybody have a comment on either of those two topics? Hold on up Karen.
Laura, you were right, I was very surprised to hear that you're leaving and I'm very sorry to hear that. I think you've been a tremendous asset to the town and you are brilliant and we are really going to miss you. And I wish you the best of luck and maybe don't be a stranger, you can come back, the door is open.
You can come and make public comments. Thank you.
Oh, that would be so much fun.
That would be fun.
Let's see, oh, Betsy, you have a comment.
Thank you Chair Golden and Laura, my goodness, you have been an incredibly level-headed, calm demeanor, intelligently addressed, one of the hardest, most complex problems I've ever witnessed. And you've done it with grace, we will really miss you. I wish you great luck where you're headed. And thank you, thank you.
All right, I do not see any more comments. Oh, wait, Nicholas, there's Nicholas, hello Nicholas, come on back.
Hey guys, thank you very much. Hey Laura, I'm sorry to see you go, I'm excited for what you're going to do next. I am amazed at the tireless work that you've put in, particularly during the housing element and seeing it through where we are right now. It's created a platform for moving forward, which is great service and great sacrifice, I think, on your part to have us gotten to where we are at this moment. I want to say thank you for, for your work and your service. I'm excited to see what's next for you.
Thank you Nicholas.
Okay, now, now we have no longer hands up. So we've got one item left, we have the minutes from May 2023. Did we have comments on the minutes?
I do not.
Ronnie, do you have any comments?
I don't.
Okay, I do not have any comments, but I have to take a public comment on the minutes. So if anybody would like to comment on the minutes from the May 3rd, please raise your hand. I do not see any hands up, so I'm going to close the public comment and adjourn the meeting.
Nope, motion.
Oh, sorry, I need a motion, that's right.
Second. You can just say all in favor.
All in favor.
We don't have to do a roll call.
Yeah, we don't have to do a roll, all in favor, fine, okay.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, good night.